Okay, I will call the September 11th, 2018 meeting of the Acton School Committee to order at this time and we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence in remembrance of 9/11 and all those who gave their lives and sacrificed so much for that day. Thank you.
You know, talking about that, I have a friend who, her daughter was killed in the Twin Towers. Her daughter wasn't supposed to be on the flight, but she traded with a friend to fly out to San Francisco to do the friend a favor so the friend could be off with her family.
So many stories to hear. Okay, we have one adjustment to the agenda.
We do, we're gonna move 7-1-1, the nomination of administrative position. Sharon Prey, who's here with us tonight, why don't we do that right after public comment?
Okay.
And that's the only one that I have.
Okay. All right, any comments from the public? Do you realize we have to limit you to that much? Okay, then I will go to 7-1-1. We'll turn your page over, we'll go to 7-1-1, nomination of administrative position.
So, just to kind of give a background to the position of part-time special ed director for the committee and Linda, who's new to the group. When I arrived, we had a partnership with a shared position with MSAD 57 where we had a part-time director for a couple of days and they had her for like two and a half days and we had her for two and a half days. And that worked out quite well and that contract expired and they hired on that person full-time so there was no part-time position available to augment the rest of the time. I looked around at every York County district and even bordering Cumberland County districts to see, does anybody want to partner with us and nobody had a need at the time. We went out on our own for a part-time director and we had Dell Peavy, who served for a year, and Dell moved on and I want to say, I think the model worked out splendidly to have our own part-time director. I think it worked out really good, it was just one place and took care of one piece of business. And Dell moved on to get a full-time position for his own needs, so he's landed in Cape. So we put out the ad and we had quite a few people interested in part-time special ed director and I think we knocked it out of the park with Sharon. I mean Sharon has, I don't want to, 30-plus, 35-plus years experience. Well, I was gonna let her say 40. Sharon has done a lot of different things, including a special ed director in MSAD 55 as well as Rochester, New Hampshire, she did quite a long run there, in Portland School Department and her last post at the Portland School Department was Chief Academic Officer, which is a title which is Assistant Superintendent and had retired, I guess for a year. You can tell us a little more, but her resume is great.
I retired for a year and after a year I saw this position posted and I thought, you know, it would be nice to get back into the workforce a couple of days a week and so when this opportunity popped up, I reached out to John and I applied for the position and I am very thankful that he would give me an opportunity to do this. I'm enjoying it immensely. I actually go home and tell my husband I love my job.
Tell him how far you commute.
I can always say that in Portland.
Tell him how far your commute is compared to Portland.
Oh yeah, 12 minutes.
Oh, very good.
To Portland, like an hour. It's very nice. So I can just pop over anytime if people need me, so makes it nice.
Very good. So I'll look for a motion to accept the nomination of Sharon Prey as a part-time special education director.
And I just want to know the amount.
Yep, the total amount for the position is $39,000.
Even?
Even.
So I'll make the motion to accept Sharon Prey for the part-time special education director for $39,000.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Now you can have the ceremonial walk to Kim's right. The right side of the finance director. Here we go. All right Sharon, welcome aboard. It's awesome.
Okay, let's move on to number three and I will look for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded, that we accept the consent agenda, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, let's move on now to number four and see if any of you have any questions from any of the administrative reports in your packet.
So is the instructional coach, never mind, there you are. What we had in the past, and I really like to have it, is what they're going to do on the early release days, because it bothers me that we give early release days because then parents have to scramble to know where their kids are. So I'd like less, in the future, I'd like less early release days. I was shocked that that first Wednesday, we had an early release day. Sanford didn't. So I was like, oh, you know, just trying to get into the week and it was a short week, four-day week, and we had an early release day. But, I understand teachers have to learn things and I just want them to be doing the proper things on those early release days so it's not a waste of time.
Okay.
And not just coffee, lunch and whatever.
That's that.
I think Mary forgot to say that she likes to know what you have planned.
Yes.
For the different days. Dell used to give us some, or not Dell, Francine used to give us.
A list at the end of her report, you know, for that month, what was gonna go on. The PBIS that we're doing, is there any material going home so parents can almost follow it if they're having problems parenting these little ones?
The first, yes, the first piece that'll be specific to PBIS will come out in the Wildcat Press, which will come out in October. We're not gonna do a publication in September because we just barrage parents with information. Yes, we discussed that last year too, so that some of the best practices that we use with kids here at school, parents can use at home too.
I didn't know if the teachers were individually sending things home and saying, this is what we're using in classroom, you might want to try this at home.
The monthly newsletter, monthly, it's, I mean, the weekly newsletters that each of the classroom teachers send home, they send to me too. And some have hit on it, but not all, and not all are specifically saying, you know, be safe, respectful and responsible are our three themes and this is how you might want to do it at home. It hasn't been that precise, but yes, it's hit in places with what are we doing? Because the first week of school, really Mary, is all about learning, relearning the classroom expectations. I met with every cohort. So really the front end of this week, and that's what they said to parents, this week we did and you'll see PBIS all over the place. But in the future, as we go down the road, I'm not sure it happens as much. I try to communicate that for them, yeah. We can do better at it though, if that's what you're suggesting, for sure.
I don't know, it might help people to know, like if I was a young mother, you know, and having these little kids and there's a system that will work, I'd like to know it. Anyway.
Might try it at home.
Right, really. And I took classes with her, that's why I know whatever she taught is teaching here.
About Pat, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, she's our consultant.
So I know what she's doing and I think some parents could learn from that. Strategic plan on the website, I went to the website because Andy said there's something on the website, I couldn't find what you were talking about on your report. So I was trying to find that and then I came, ooh, look at the strategic plan and it has like the 2015 dates, it needs to be updated. I just have to, if I say it to someone, maybe, you know, we'll remember to do that. And just, I know you would know, but when are the high schoolers going back, getting into the new high school?
Still planning on them Tuesday after the holiday of Columbus weekend, I've heard, no change.
That's my questions.
And Lori, I like your format of your report.
Hey, there you go. I'm hoping to see where we go, let's try and see what they say.
And I thought that on your report that you pretty much, I assume these three dates are all Wednesday, early release days, right? So on September 12th, you're gonna do Mastery Connect Tractors and you're gonna do NWEA and then social emotional session, I might come to that one. You're gonna do that one on the 26th, so did you want more than that, Mary?
No, I guess, you know, I didn't know if she's.
Did you miss that little thing?
No, I saw all that. Oh, that's what she meant.
Yeah, those are the early release agendas for the month of September.
Well, what we're trying to do, and I know that's what Kevin was getting towards, is the teachers trying to teach the teachers or, you know, that whole thing, you know, where we want the teachers to learn from.
When we got this paper last month about raise the floor.
That's on, we put that on, we set that aside.
We did. No further information, we're just gonna let it sit.
He'll follow it.
Yeah, we're watching. Just to give you an update, the gentleman reached out to me, he's meeting with the York Town Board of Selectmen sometime in the next week. Kim followed up, as we asked her to, to talk about whether it makes sense for Acton and at this point, we're gonna do a sit and wait, see what other towns do sign on. They're looking to raise a fairly substantial amount of money to hire a lobbying firm, as you know, that was part of it, to try to raise the floor for all low receivers. I think there's a lot of merit in the effort, I don't know if the effort will bear fruit and I think we're prudent right now to sit and wait a little bit to see what that looks like before we jump on board, if we jump on board. I know Kim has some thoughts, I'm not gonna call on her to give them to you because we don't have that kind of time tonight. We'll let that go right now.
I think too, I think we have to think about, do we want to spend money?
That's what I'm driving at.
Do we want to spend money to help support a lobbyist when we don't really know if we're gonna reap any benefits from it?
We're low-receiving for a reason.
And according to this paper, 55% this year, seeing as believing.
Does that pertain to us?
That was like 15, how many years ago?
But it's just, well, if we fit into the formula, that's all.
You know, I just wondered, I mean.
We won't get 55.
You know, we fought for the donut hole, so we don't have to fight for this.
Just wondering, you know, I'm not in favor of spending money.
No, somebody else wants to fight, good.
These lobbyists, you know, I don't know.
I'm recommending you take no action at this time.
No, no, I didn't mean any action, I didn't know if you heard anything more.
Not really.
Because these lobbyists make a lot of money.
Jennifer, does the librarian have a flyswatter?
I do not, but there is one fly that has been making me crazy today.
She's coming after me.
That's why we're all waving.
I would recommend that to be available for our next meeting.
Your library's a fly swatter.
Okay, let's move on then to number four and. Super nancy floor.
You bet, I just have a few items, this is, I updated you in your first weekly memo and I also put most everything I wanted to say in my report to you, but school opened successfully, really, it's been really good, a good opening of school. We have some really, I mentioned this to you in my weekly, we have some really good new staff. I mean, it was turnkey, it was plug and play, people come in, Sharon's come in and already made some great changes and moved the staff forward and to open school. I mean, I'm feeling very confident. Although we have new people, we have people that have experience.
Yes.
There's a difference between new people and people who are new and don't have any experience. A lot of our new people know what they're doing and they wanted to come here and it's really, you can tell, it really feels different when you hire on so many new people and the place runs well. I mentioned that, I think that the school bus routes have settled down. I tried to be proactive and I mentioned it to parents when I saw them and I tried to get out there that please be patient with bus routes, there's nothing worse than to get the smart sharp the night before, try to figure out when you get supposed to be out there, because they may not be right on time. But they're much closer to where they need to be now and the goal was that within the first two weeks, our buses are running on time. We did have an issue with the high school bus, I resolved what that issue was, I got some feedback from Linda that the bus seems to be, at the high school level, seems to be doing much better now.
Much better.
Which was my hope and I got some feedback from the community that it should run on time and they're absolutely right. But I think we got through that, so by the end of this week, it's our second week, I think buses are gonna be fine. Lastly, open house is Tuesday, September 18th, that would be a week from tonight. We have our meeting, we have our open house at 6:00, but at 5:00, the PTG will have their spaghetti supper free to the public and families to come and have that community event and then we'll transition to the gym at 6:00 with some introductions and then the open house begins and it'll be over by 7:00. So I encourage all to come and that's my report.
Any questions for John? All right, let's move on to number five and that's progress monitoring reports and we'll turn it over to Lori.
While we wait, I did see Andy's video on the website.
Oh darn, where was it?
It was nice to see all the pictures of the school, all cleaned up, all gussied up.
Danielle Hall also put it on the what's up at Acton page too.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, it's on there.
There were also nice comments on that page from some new parents to town.
Yeah.
They said that they just were so happy of how the kids were welcomed to school and everything.
That's great.
So this is the presentation I did with teachers on opening day and it includes the goals that are included in the comprehensive needs assessment that was written and submitted to the state last year, or this July 1st, as well as some of the goals from the federal funds, Title I, Title II and Title IV. So, well, this was a slide about me, oh, it's not working.
Is your arrows left or right?
It did.
Is she locked?
Am I locked?
Good thing we have our tech director right here at the meeting. We can reboot him, there we go.
Oh, no. What did you do? Oh, there goes Bill. So that was just information about me so that the teachers would know who I am, you don't need to know all those little details. We talked about an opening moment and really thinking about the school year and how they were gonna spark learning in their students. So we did a little activity where I had them each complete a card. They didn't have to put their name on it and as you can see, we completed that and we have the bulletin board out in the hallway if you have time. I urge you to stop and read what some of the teachers included on their card, the hopes that they. And then the related arts team or the specialists created the bulletin board, came up with the Spark the Year Off Right as the title for the bulletin board. So it'll be good for our parents and kids to read what the teachers hope to do throughout the year. And then some of the goals that we worked on. So in the comprehensive needs assessment that was done last year, the district had to, or the school had to identify their strengths and then some areas of improvement that they were gonna focus on this year. So what was identified was the work that was done with PBIS, that communication between school and families was getting better and had increased, not that we'll stop working on that, but just finding more ways to increase that communication. And that looking at the data in NWEA, the Fanta-Simpanel Reading Assessment, the MEA over the last few years, that there is some growth happening in the area of literacy. What we're not seeing is, or the areas of improvement, was there's not enough use of the data that we currently have, so teachers need time. So again, next Wednesday, one of the early release days, we'll take a look now at our NWEA data and talk about how do we analyze that and maybe adjust some of our instructional practices. And really focus on math, math achievement, because the MEA data is showing just really flat-line data over the last couple of years. The new MEA data will be available in October, so we'll be able to see a three-year trend of what that looks like. So we'll have more data to look at. So in Title I, I didn't change a lot of the goals that were written in from last year only because being new to the school, just leaving things at an 85% that all kids, 85% of the kids will show yearly growth. That actually was a little bit higher this year anyway, most kids, it was up in the 90s, actually did show growth in math and reading and in science, but we kind of wanted to leave it that way as we really dig into data and adjust our practices for another year. But I anticipate that will be bumped up as we get better at what we're doing. So these are the goals that are currently in the Title I, Title I federal grant application. And we do look at all kids, even though we're here, we would just be looking at the Title I kids. And feel free to stop if you have, stop me if you have questions. Title II is the federal funds that support professional development and improvement of teacher and practices. And we were looking at just keeping some of the initiatives and programs that you started in place so that we can get better at those before we move into something new. So Project Lead the Way for Science, the reading and writing of Lucy Cockens, the units of study, especially K to 5 with that program, using the Mastery Connect tool to track student learning, looking at effective instructional strategies for math, again in the use of the data, that's part of those areas of focus, and then the implementation of PBIS and taking that to another level. So those funds from Title II will be used to support those projects. For Title IV, that was sort of kicked back to us to rewrite this year because we didn't, Acton didn't complete the goal that was set for last year in this grant and it happened to be around the implementation of a health curriculum. The teachers did a lot of work in identifying what they were currently teaching with the health curriculum, but no final implementation plan was developed. So what we've decided to do this year is to really take a look at one component of the health curriculum that ties in with PBIS and the behavioral intervention side of RTI that you've been working on. So we're gonna honor the work that was done with the health curriculum for last year, but focus on the social-emotional component, looking at the safe, respectful, responsible aspect of the classroom and the school, look at our learning spaces, do those support student learning and to really build on some of the trauma-informed teacher information that the social worker has started sending out to staff. Because when we're looking at students maybe acting out or some certain behaviors happening, we really have to dig and see what's the root cause for some of those behaviors and are they tied to some of the trauma or some of the experiences kids have had outside of school. So really taking a look at that piece of the health of the kids.
So that's a part in your report, then it will be on the third Wednesday?
Yeah, we'll start looking at those. So I just dug a little bit deeper with teachers around use of data and what we're gonna do with that and what support will they need to help with that. I included the math practices that are part of the standards because math is not just about numbers, it's really about reasoning and mathematical thinking. And so the reason we put the practices up there, or it was so that I could involve the art and the music and the PE and R there and the librarian, is there are places where they can look at some of these practices and be building on some of those skills with the kids as well, not just in the classroom and the math classes. So this was some of the data that I also shared with them from the MEA, the state assessment for the last couple of years around math. Level 3 or 4 means students met or exceeded. So what you're looking at for math in 15, 16 was 32% of the whole school was at a 3 or a 4. And when that got to 16 and 17, that was only 33% of the whole school. So really a 1% increase and you can look at the other numbers for math over the last couple of years, it's really been sort of flat. And where you look at ELA, it's gone from 44% to 52%. And then you look at the female versus male, the economically disadvantaged and the special ed population. So there's some growth in literacy and not so much with the math, which is why our focus will be on really looking at the math data this year while we continue to build literacy. So you can't let one go just because you're focusing on the other. So the new MEA data will be available in October and we'll take a look at the three-year trend. And the state will be taking a look at identifying schools for improvement, once they have that three years of data, and they're gonna start looking at four components to identify schools. One is absenteeism, one is academic progress, so our kids showing growth, one is the achievement, how many are achieving the benchmark, and then the other one, and I'm not sure how this will factor into the K to 8 systems, is the graduation rate. I'm not sure how they'll be tracking that, but that's the fourth component.
We get the MEA data before they release it to the public, we've got a preview of it. So Lori and I and some others will look at that when it comes in, before it gets released to the public.
So this was just a slide to show them a little more data, 175 out of 179 students assessed in math from fall to spring showed growth, but my question would be, how many met the benchmark and where were they falling? And then did each individual student meet their projected growth as measured by the NWEA? And the same thing with reading, I sort of dug a little bit deeper with the numbers, but I still had questions about what the numbers were saying. So it's not a matter of just looking at the data, it's really digging in and asking those questions and how do we use that information in our instruction. So then I summarize the information again for teachers because this led into some of the, an activity that we did, which I'll share with you. And again, one of the other pieces is looking at some programs, actions that we're gonna take this year in looking at those areas of focus. So what they did was they went off in their grade level cohorts and their specialist cohort and they answered these questions and I have them actually hanging in my office so I can start looking at what information they need from me or what support they need from me as an instructional coach to put some of these things into place. So it really gave me a lens into what their cohorts were thinking and so I gave them work time and so these are. These are the products, you can go into my office at any point in time and read them, I know they're hard to read here, but they have some great information on them. These were two of them and then we had one cohort who didn't.
The outlier group.
Yes, the outliers. Created a tree.
It's the apple tree.
They did not have to create a body, it was just create a visual that answers these questions, so they created a tree with multiple branches. So it was great conversation and then they had to bring these back and share them with the whole staff. And then the last thing I left them with was some input on their ERD time, what's going to be most beneficial for them. So I sent them a link to a Google forum that had like three questions. What's your professional, individual sort of professional need? What's your cohort need and then what do you see as a school need? And so I now have that information to use to help plan those early release days to make them meaningful for teachers. And I did end with a closing moment, but we don't have to watch the little video that I had. But this was a video that really the message is, this gentleman had to sing a song and then they stopped him and they gave him a scenario and then he had to sing it again. And the two performances were very, very different because the message was, when you know why your what, what you do, has more impact because there's a purpose for it. So that was sort of the message I left with teachers on opening day, is when you know why you're doing what you're doing, then what you're doing has more of an impact because there's a purpose to it. So we talked about that, opening moments, closing moments, really getting teachers to think and reflect on their practice. But that's, that's all I have.
Very good. Good.
Questions, comments?
Comments, I think you're doing a great job.
Very organized.
That's good.
Yeah, this is really what the board has been looking for, so, yeah.
It was a very positive first two days of PD with the teachers, it seems like years ago, we have, doesn't it? We all got together and there's been so many kid, things we've been doing with our kids and prepping them, you know, just having teachers in the building, just them. A lot of fun, a lot of positive energy, a lot of organization on Lori's part. Awesome kickoff, Judy and Jeanette were there, Judy did a very good inspirational work with them and got them pumped up to get going. What was your acronym?
TEACH.
Teach, because at the end, it was like, thank you. Thank you. It was just, it was, it was really good overall.
Very good. I know, you had to deal with the school and that heat, it was horrible.
And the fans going and then we'd have to shut one off to talk because you can't hear anything with the fans going. Thank you Laurie, well done.
Thank you very much Laurie. Okay, let's move on to number six, which is committee reports. No report from the long range planning committee tonight.
We'll hopefully meet next, next month, you think?
Yeah, we can. Might be a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah. Shoot for before the meeting.
Maybe you, yeah.
5:15? Okay. It's a great idea.
Is that good?
And the policy committee did meet, so we'll look for, to review policy BD which pertains to school committee meetings.
Well, what came in the packet was what you saw on a monthly basis, yellowed out, second Tuesdays each month, but on reconsideration, this meeting, we just thought we'd leave it the way it was, but to put meeting each month, no Thursday. We'll continue with the Tuesdays, our monthly meetings.
Can I explain?
So, we're just going to leave it the way it was.
Now, some of you heard my call to could we change it to Thursday and then thank you for, for, you know, hearing that call. Couple things, one, the Board of Deacons doesn't really do elections and take on new members till January anyway. And I mentioned to my team that we may shift to Thursday and it did impact some people on my team that planned on Tuesdays for the year. So what I recommend is let's stay with Tuesdays until further notice, but I think where the, where the policy committee went was exactly right, is you don't target a day, you just say we meet monthly. That way, if you think about it next year, if anybody happened to pick up something they couldn't do Tuesday and you all agreed you wanted to meet on a Thursday or a Wednesday, you could do it without changing policy to do it.
Right.
You still need to meet once a month, but you're not saying it's going to be on a Tuesday.
Well, we specified the second Tuesday.
I know.
Yes, well, right.
I mean, the, the public needs to know we meet, you know, regularly on a certain day, but there could be changes.
Right, so I would, I'm recommending just stay with the second Tuesday for now, but adopt the policy because that gives you flexibility. That's my recommendation.
No, you're saying adopt it, getting rid of something?
No, keep it as a monthly basis.
Keep it as a monthly basis.
Oh, the new one that was sent to give to us?
Don't say Tuesday at six, but keep it Tuesday at six.
How we can, how we can deal with this, Mary too, is that at our first meeting, if we, if we adopt it and say we're meeting on a monthly basis, at our first meeting in September, we can say, you know, during this school year, we're planning to meet on Tues, every Tuesday at a certain time. And so that will kind of set it up for the year, so it will be, well, know what time we're meeting. Next year, maybe we might say this year, we're going to meet on Wednesdays at a certain time. But at the, at our first meeting in September, we can just set the, set the day of the week. I think that'll work okay.
And then when it's posted on the back of the agenda, when you post them, if you have, the dates changed, then it's changed. The other thing I thought of was that, how about changing the time of the meetings? How about five o'clock instead of six? Too early? Five thirty?
It's 3:00.
What? I'm just thinking, you know, Kim and John got a long distance to travel, other people that come have long distance to travel. Where do you live?
Lyman.
See that, Lyman? Oh, that's.
Well, wait, 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 this, this, the selectmen meet at five, correct?
They meet at five on Tuesdays.
So that's, but once we get into budget, someone comes from the selectmen. So I think that's why it was six.
Yeah, but it can't, I mean, oh, but.
Well, we can.
That's only for a certain part of the year.
We can move our meetings up.
When we get into budget, we're going to be a couple hours every night anyway when we do meet. So there's no getting around that. Well, you started five, you know, we kind of started at five during budget season anyway, didn't we?
We did.
We did anyway, come to think of it. Then we had the Warren Finance meet after six. Yeah, so you know what, we did meet at five anyway.
We could still leave it there.
I would like to meet at five.
That'd be great.
Could you do that?
Do I speak for the team? It gets you guys into the meeting earlier and maybe out earlier.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Jeanette brought it to the table, I said.
It started four-wheeling up.
Thank Jeanette for that one, so.
No, I'm just thinking, I mean, here.
Five is good.
If you can do it, can you do five? Can you do five?
Yeah.
And then they can get out of here early if it's snowing. Now, where do you live in Sarko?
I live in Lyman too.
You live in Lyman too?
So, do we need to make a motion that for this school year, we're going to, the school committee will meet regularly on Tuesdays at five o'clock?
Yep, you can do that and put it right on the back of the sheet here.
So Long Range Planning Committee for next school.
4:15.
Well, I was just going to say, I just wanted to throw that in for your vote because we just said we're going to do a long range planning. Does that work for Andy? 4:15 and then we meet at five? Perfect, I'll change that up.
15.
If traffic's not too heavy, right?
Love that.
If traffic's not too heavy, where?
All right, I'll make a motion.
Traffic's not too heavy for me either.
For starting the, our meeting at 5:00 PM for this school year on Tuesdays.
The second Tuesday of the month.
The second Tuesday of the month. At five.
I'll second that.
Jeanette seconded it? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so moved.
Excellent work, policy committee for our first meeting together. Very good.
So are we going to, are we going to change the P, we're changing the BD policy? That was just, we're changing. So people know we voted on five.
I'll hold my accolades till after your vote. Sorry, I jumped the guy.
So now, now, now I'd like to, to look for a motion to change or update, up to update policy BD in the first paragraph.
To revise.
To read, the school committee will hold regular meetings, regular monthly meetings, I think it should say.
On a monthly basis.
Okay.
Regular business meeting, that's fine.
On a monthly basis. You got that? I have a different sheet.
Regular meetings on a monthly basis.
We just got these tonight.
If the date of a regular meeting is changed, the change will be publicized according to law. Just leave out the part where it says the second Tuesday and that gives us flexibility whenever we need it. We won't have to come back to this policy again to change it.
Right, and then you can say five o'clock. What's, is that on here? Are they on here?
Yeah.
We don't want to put a time in the BD.
We've already, we've just voted that for this year, five o'clock.
No, I know, but I'm just saying where, oh, here it is, it's on the front of the sheet, anyway, yeah.
It's on your agenda.
Yep. Okay, and we voted, so that's done, right?
No, we didn't vote.
We didn't vote.
You would make, you would, you would.
Oh, oh, this is on the change in the policy?
Yes.
Right.
Mary, Mary made the motion?
Now Jeanette has.
Jeanette seconded it? All those in favor?
I made the motion to change, to change the policy BD.
Okay, but the, I didn't hear you say it.
Okay.
She did.
The school committee will hold regular business meetings on a monthly basis.
Okay, all right, got it.
It's a revision of policy BD.
Yes, that's what I wrote, revised policy.
Instead of saying Tuesday, right.
And Jeanette said second.
And Jeanette said second and we all said, yes.
I, I, okay.
All righty then.
We aren't to say anything about five o'clock.
Negotiations?
Dates?
Yeah, I gave, I sent you a text. Mary, Mary saw me just before. Do you want to speak to a date that we have set, Mary? Or do you want me to take it?
Um, yeah, no, we were, negotiations with the support staff would be not until October So now we just need to set a date with the teachers and we'll know more next month.
I have too many Amandas in my life. I went to Amanda Cormier, sorry.
Oh. I've only gotten two of her emails so far. And both people caught it.
Oh gee.
So I did send, I did text it to you and Amanda Cormier didn't respond because she's probably like, I don't need to be in negotiations. At least she knows when it is. Thank you. My fault.
Okay, let's move over to new business.
Oh, I was just going to ask a question of Andy here. You, the oil contract, $2.41 a gallon, huh?
Yes.
What are you trying to say?
Well, I think the price of oil is going to be pretty high because I just fill my tanks at 2.45 a gallon and there isn't anybody less than that. They're higher, but not any less than that.
Yep. So I got that. We got the contract on and I realized what things were, and I had mine filled in home.
He did a great job.
Usually, it's an indicator, it's going to be expensive this winter.
Right, when I saw that, I thought, oh, thank God, I did that, but.
Yeah, I just fill more, so I'm glad.
All right then, we can skip number seven because we've already done number seven, correct? And we'll move on to old business and do we have any old business?
Just us.
Just us.
I need to take notes with you.
I don't know if I'm able to recommend changing the nine and 10. That way we document your, on your, is that what 10 is? To vote on your, your contract for the next year?
No, what's going to happen is we're going into executive session, we're coming out of executive session and then we're going back into public. So nobody has to stick around for that unless you care to. You'll have to leave during executive session, come back in for the public meeting.
Do you want?
I'll turn it back on for the public meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll shut it off for executive session. I, I've done this a bunch of times.
All right, well, she usually turns this equipment down.
I'm good at tearing equipment down. For Jeanette, I'll rip it right apart. You're good. So when they, when the school committee closes this public session, we'll be in executive session for a little bit. There's some matters I need to work with them on that are here. And then we got business to do, which will be in public, which is just to vote and then we'll close for the night. I'll work the switch. I'll work the switch. We're good, you don't have to stick around for that. Okay.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session as per 1 MRSA 4056A Personnel Matters. And at what time?
It's, we got 7:00.
6:49.
6:44.
6:44, sorry. Okay. So you got that one?
Yep.
Okay. I'll get them coming out, opening and closing.
Jeanette's second.
Yep, all those in favor? So moved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thank you, nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you.[1708.54]